Good morning, everyone. We'll bring this meeting of the Cooch County Board of Commissioners to order. First thing is the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item is public comment. Does anybody want to hear from public comment?
Approve proposed agenda with additions and/or deletions. I guess there was one deletion, right?
Correct.
The deletion was M.C.I.T. report by risk management. I can't make it due to illness. And three additions are notice of hire of part-time E-91 corrections officer Lisa Mortensen, effective 417, and Doug Silver's effective 413. Second addition is notice of separation of part-time E-91 corrections officer Andy Jespersen, effective 47. And next addition is A.R.D.C., comprehensive trails plan funding request. I'll ask for a motion with the additions. Get the motion by Commissioner McBride, second by Commissioner Pavlik. Any discussion? Hearing not all in favor?
Next is to approve the minutes of April 18th. Motion by Commissioner Pavlik, second by Commissioner Nordby. Discussion. Hearing not all in favor?
Right.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Jenny was trying to make us look good in spite of ourselves. Well, they sounded good. It doesn't sound like us.
You do a good job. Approve payments.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move to approve the payments for highly claims, courthouse claims, public health claims, and move down to approve burial payment. But there's three exceptions, Steve. Vendor number 65647 and 25220 and 78768 need some further review, so we, at this time, we won't approve those three vendors. So I can then approve the payments.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second is presented.
Second by Commissioner Pavlik. I had a telephone conversation with Jen this morning, and we're gonna schedule something to talk with them, all right?
Good idea.
But until then, we won't pay them, right?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Right.
All right. Any opposed? Motion carried.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, I missed the second term.
Please do that. Just Commissioner Pavlik. So on Water Conservation District Quarterly Update. Morning, Pam.
Good morning, Commissioners, and thank you for having me this morning. Dale Olson has been nagging me to do stuff like this, and then Commissioner Nordby was at our last board meeting and concurred that, especially since we're now no longer located in the courthouse, and even though we're just a little kitty-corner away, it's still a good idea to come over so that you can hear what the Soylent Water District has been up to and what we look forward to being up to.
Dale nags us all the time, too.
Yes, he's really good at that.
Everybody finding you okay over there?
It is. I only had Lyle Potma, longtime forester in the county, wonderful. I got a call from Diane Adams at the library. He couldn't locate us and ended up at the library, and she was kind enough to give me a call and help direct him our way. So I'm gonna work with the I.S. department to get our address updated on the county's website. Ours is updated, but we're linked, so we'll get those addresses updated as well. So I passed out a copy of our 2016 annual report, and that's just something for you all to take home and review at any time. Please contact me with questions. And it really highlights our year in review. It's hard to caption.
It's really well done.
Thank you, thank you. I appreciate my staff who works hard as well to try to capture. We get so busy working that sometimes we forget to stop and collect our thoughts and put onto paper those accomplishments that we're doing, but we sure appreciate all of our partners. I did try to highlight, including the public, on the very last page, the vast partnership that we have with so many entities that really make our jobs much easier and much more productive. The amount of projects we're seeing implemented and from all aspects of natural resource management has just been tremendous, and we appreciate the public, the county, all of our city and state and federal partners, so thank you. So this is just for you to keep and to look at at your leisure, and feel free to contact me if you have any questions. And then the single sheet that I handed out, it started off as just my notes to myself, and then as it grew, I thought maybe I should make copies because it's a lot of information. But it's just a snapshot of what our 2017 is looking like. And so really briefly, I'm just gonna hit those highlights. As most of you know, I'm on the International Rainy and Amican Roll Curve Study Board. That project has been almost a two-year endeavor. We are currently at the draft report that will go out for public comment probably by the end of the week. And then on Friday, I head to Washington, D.C. for the study board's appearance before the I.J.C. to present that draft report. To date, it looks like we've kind of zeroed in on a real viable option with a backup option, both of which have garnered great support locally. The Rainy Lake Property Owners Association, Voyagers National Park, our scientists, they've all are in agreement, which was a little odd to us.
Were P.C.A. in agreement?
I don't know that they've offered up much comment, but they'll have their opportunity in this next. But it really, P.C.A. is more of the water quality aspect, and we're really more, this is really more involving the water quantity, so they haven't had a lot of concerns in that regard, so we're really, and my team has done such a wonderful job of putting together videos on how water management goes. I will definitely encourage, I'll touch base with Jen and encourage all of you to go to the website link where that draft report is up and review and make comments, but also to take advantage of all of the handouts and videos and materials that have been developed. It's been a wonderful, a long and sometimes stressful experience, but it's been a wonderful experience working locally as the only local member. The team comes from half in Canada, half here, but no one local, and I can say with great pride that the team they assembled did not leave any option or question unturned. They just really tried very hard to put together models, to hear every landowner's concerns. It's definitely a group I'm proud to be associated with, so that's kind of the big thing that's been happening on my plate. The rest of it is really involving a lot of my staff. As you know, Environmental Services is the lead as the L.G.U. for the water plan. We're trying to alleviate a lot of that off of Dale's plate, so we're gonna take the lead on rewriting that. We've done the priority concern scoping document. It's now in state agencies' hands for review. We, of course, will be reorganizing on watershed, but Dale will be our reviewer and our final say, so nothing will come to you without his review and okay, so we feel really good about that. A.I.S. is kicked off, the decontamination unit is on its way, inspectors have been hired, and it looks like by fishing opener, everyone will be at stations and ready to go. So that's a collaboration between our office and Environmental Services, so Sam Soderman is my lead. He's working with Dale very closely to keep that running.
Where those gonna be located at?
Just at the Rainy Lake landings, so I think there's only three landings that are gonna be, the main focus is Rainy.
So they're gonna be Tilson at the park? Are we not allowed at the park?
I am not sure about the park, but I will follow up with that with Sam and...
Tilson and the park are two busiest on Rainy, and Rainier, of course, is about very busy too. Yeah, well, then you got, you got Monterey, City, you know, where's that, what do they call that? Mary, Pat Roach. Pat Roach Landing.
I know that the decontamination unit is gonna be stationed by that parking lot by the roadhouse. That's where the decon unit will be, so where they direct them there.
Just a brief comment on that. We had a presentation, one of these regional boards, and what they're telling us is that all the effort we're putting into this will only delay it. That's all we're doing is slowing it down, because it's a matter of the map with so many boats and so much travel, eventually these lakes are gonna be affected.
It's an unfortunate probability, and we're hearing the same thing with terrestrial invasives as well. That is, we continue to fight the fight against wild parsnip and some of these other very nuisance invasives, we're hearing the same thing, that it's just unfortunately, control efforts are...
Having them at landings is a good thing because it's educational.
Yeah.
That's all you can do about that.
So essentially, now this is gonna be set up like on Highway 11 East, and boats come on trailers being directed in?
Yeah.
That's a good idea.
Yeah.
Then you catch everybody.
And I just wanna reiterate the point that, and all of the inspectors are being trained by the DNR, but the main message is, this is not an enforcement program. They are not out there to enforce, they're out there to educate. That's really, the Soylent Water Conservation District is not a regulatory or an enforcement agency at all, so we really do strive to come from the perspective of education. Typically, when people know better, they do better, so that's just really our focus is to offer up that education, so. But I can follow up with additional info on A.I.S. with Dale and Sam. Water monitoring and civic engagement is really a big part of our workload. As you know, our funding is very hodgepodge and very patchwork, and so a lot of our contracts have been with P.C.A. to do the work that they're charged with by the legislature to do water monitoring. They, of course, don't wanna send staff up from the cities to water monitor up here, which makes a perfect way for us to work for those contracts. So I won't go through all of these, but you can read those on your own. There's a lot, just water monitoring on the Rat River and the Black, Rainy River. Some monitoring is event-based, which means it's only sampled when there's been a huge rain event, and what they're looking for is load monitoring or pollutant monitoring that happens after a big runoff. Others are just a scheduled type. It's called a surface water assessment grant where we do scheduled sampling to get a baseline for, as we move forward in the watershed restoration and assessment program. Public outreach is a big thing that Jolene from my staff does. We're gonna be starting outreach events for the lower Rainy Rapid River and Rainy Lake watersheds here soon, and she is part of an effort to put a staff gauge up on the Rat Root, and so we're gonna, it'll be a place where volunteers can stop by and take a snapshot of the water level that day, and then it'll be kind of, we call it a crowdsourced hydrology program, where that'll be GPS'd or GIS'd, and you'll be able to see on a map on a given day where the water levels were at, and it's just a program that they're trying to implement to see for, again, water quantity, where, how, why, how high the water levels go, and then that helps us do estimates of potential shorebank erosion, how long banks are saturated with the probability of losing that soil loss is, so that's been kind of a fun one. Cooperative weed management, we just talked, touched on terrestrial invasives. We are, we were contacted by the DNR to do a pilot project in Cooch County. Lands and Forests is kind of connected with us with that as well. Nathan, Commissioner, Land Commissioner contacted me if I would be the fiscal agent should something materialize for this pilot project, which we've agreed to do. We're still in the discussion phase. There's been some unfortunate thoughts that, again, with what you said, Commissioner Pavlik, about aquatic invasives, that terrestrials may be hard to stop. We may only be slowing down, but we're still going to look at the opportunity to create a cooperative weed management area and look at grant opportunities to put together a plan and see what could be addressed or delayed at all in the county.
We had a discussion last night at our Big Fork River Board on all invasives, you know? Yeah, terrestrial and aquatic, so.
Excellent.
Those zebra mussels are moving into places such as inland, inland lakes like in Val Canby County, not just lake superiors, everywhere.
Yeah.
And as most of you know, I was able to hire a forester last June, and to make it even better, he was a dislocated Boise employee, so it was wonderful to be able to bring back a local person who was displaced by the layoffs back in 2013. James Asen is our forester. He's been doing a great job, has been writing private forest management plans, which has, was identified as a real need in this community for a long time, and so we're extremely happy that he's been very busy. We're also, he's also leading the non-industrial private forest land project with Lindbergh Echola out of Minnesota Forest Resource Council. We're the lead on that to identify the Little Fork headwaters areas where fragmentation and in holdings have really contributed to the land management being disrupted. So you have large stands of forest land, and when you've got all these fragmented parcels, it makes that landscape level management very difficult.
Maybe you can find Frankie a job.
I would love to find Frankie a job, but he scares me a little bit.
He scares us, too. Gotta keep you busy.
That was with, through the Workforce Center that...
Yes, we also worked through the Workforce Center on a small grant, so it was a great three-leg partnership to bring James on board, and I mentioned earlier that our funding is really piecemealed, so all of my staff, I appreciate that they are, they're mindful of their own grants and budgets, and so we're always looking for additional opportunities to do grant work, but it's, my only criteria for my staff is that they know our mission and that what we choose to work on fits our goal as we're established in statute, so...
He's been a good addition.
What's that?
He's been a really good addition.
Yes. I'm very fortunate to have four very talented and dedicated staff. I'm very, very pleased. Lot of international work. Jolene is actually working with the schools, the city, and the county. Matt Gwynn at Survey, they're going out, I don't have a large picture, but, because I thought about it afterwards, but they're working on this little stencil program to stencil this graphic by the storm drains. They're going out with the high, with the school kids, and it just says, "Dump No Waste", and then a picture of a fish drains to the river. And so it's just a little educational piece so that as you come across a storm drain, sometimes folks are not mindful of where that drain actually outlets to, and so it's an educational project that they're doing.
When I was a kid, I can remember people dumping their motor oil when they changed their oil down those drains.
Yeah, and a lot of times it's just not being aware of how our waters are connected and how the drain systems work, so that's an effort that she's heading up. I think she's also doing some education at Voyagers National Park. She also leads our youth education events out. She coordinates with Dale, and again, some of the things we're trying to take off of his plate are coordinating the household hazardous, working at the Household Hazardous Waste Collection, and the environmental education out at the high school, or out at the golf course. And then, of course, we have this area Envirethon that involves nine counties. We've got local communities that this year donated $750 to support that, and we only had to contribute $250 to the event, so the remaining 500 is being split between the five teams from Cooch County that are attending. So we're really proud, and the last thing is just an FYI that we're hosting the Area Eight Tour in Cooch County this year. It's, you might recall from a few years back, we're part of what's called Area Eight for our association, and there are nine counties in our area, and we take turns hosting a tour in an annual meeting, and it really gives us an opportunity to bring 75, 100 people in our area around the county to see the types of projects that we're working on, see our unique landscape. Even though we're in the same county structure as Cass or Wadena or Hubbard, we have different land use issues or concerns, and so it's a great opportunity. I'll make sure that you're all aware of when it is, and if you're inclined to attend, you're more than welcome. So I've taken up enough of your time, and I just appreciate being able to come and give you a quick update on all the great stuff we're doing over.
You still got Tom over there, right? Try.
Tom's with you!
Oh, exactly. That's was a forester.
Yep, 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 he's with...
Are you aware that the Park Services, the new pilot project on Rainy somewhere to, for some invasive?
Yes, so we are...
Kind of watch that and see...
Yep, we actually learned about that through the Roll Curve update. They've been very engaged in offering up information or comments on mercury levels, on some of the invasives, the whitefish, yellowfish, so yellow perch, I think, and so we've got a good network going there, and they did let us know that that was something that was coming up, and we'll keep in touch with them and offer any assistance that we can.
Mr. Chair? No, you mentioned that the A.I.S. checkpoints, you're gonna try to catch them before they get to individual landings. Is this what the council used to say?
I believe so, and I know that Sam's probably the better one to answer the details of the program, but it's my understanding that there will be three. We, I believe they've hired nine inspectors. They'll work mainly Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and the goal will be to catch the boats before they get to the water source, to give them, do like a quick little survey, educate them quickly about A.I.S., and then if they agree, be able to check the boat, and, but I think that it's coming out of the water, too, with the decontamination, too, so...
Well, yeah, 'cause my question was, when in the Park is that, how many boats are put in in order for?
I do not know.
Well, the park can hold jam full of boats and lots of people, yeah.
Well, is the park doing it? I mean, you just mentioned, oh, the park was gonna do some study, but do they do any monitoring there and prevention?
I'm not able to answer that, but I will definitely follow up with that question with Sam and Dale and find out, 'cause that's a great question. If they bypass 11 and go straight out to the park to launch, are there any protection measures in place out there? I will find that answer and get back with you.
How'd you know how the space worked out?
It's fabulous, and what turned out to be a tearful, sad day, that day that you guys called me to the basement, to say, so sorry, that sad day turned into just a great, wonderful opportunity. We would've never been able to bring our forester on board had we not, I don't like to say be forced to move, but as circumstances unfolded and we needed to find a different place, this really allowed us to bring James on board. He's, now we're full again, so I can't bring on any more staff, we're at capacity. But the partners in that building, Luca Chick, Coleman Meester, could not be more gracious and helpful, so it is, has been a win-win for all of us.
And a reasonable rent.
Yes, they are mindful that we are not a wealthy district, so they've been very kind in keeping us at affordable rent, and we so appreciate having them. We appreciate them as landlords, and so if I couldn't be here where I spent the first 20 years of my career, then just being kitty-corner across the way here is not bad, and I thank the county again for helping me get relocated and...
She had no daylight for about 18 of those years.
First 18 years I was in the basement, feeling like a mushroom, so...
She was fearful not to say in the dark.
In the dark, yeah.
You were safe when the tornadoes came.
I was, I was, and I didn't, I wasn't, I didn't mind for the first 18, but then as you start to expand staff and they reminded me that it was a little dreary with no wind.
We saw what it was doing to Terry Glowak. So we had to get you out of there.
Had to get me out of their way.
Thanks, Pam.
Thank you all very much. Thank you.
Thanks for coming, Pam.
Kathy, see what the Park is doing.
Mr. Chair, we have the two additions.
Technically, they don't have any authority in the water.
We'll do the, next we'll do the first addition, notice of hire, part-time corrections officer Lisa Mortensen, effective 417, and Doug Silver's effective 413, and that's just notice, okay. And then notice of separation of E-91 corrections officer Andy Jespersen, effective 47. And... Sam, do you want to order?
He's been full time at Black Duck since last August, and then he wanted to continue with part-time and realized that he's just too busy, and so he...
I mean, it's a lot, he's a great kid, good officer, yeah, they really enjoyed it when we were looking for grants, so that's right.
Okay, and now you're up, Kathy.
Good morning.
Good morning. We did your burial.
You did it already?
Your burial, but...
Hopefully not.
Go ahead.
So the first item is the request for approval of the renewal of the Minnesota Department of Human Services contract for the local collaborative time study, and there are no changes or anything with this contract, it's just, just a renewal.
Got a motion by Commissioner Pavlik. Second by Commissioner Skoye. Discussion. Hearing not all in favor? I opposed. Motion carried.
And then, my understanding is you did the burial?
Yep, yes.
And so the last item that we have that is on the agenda is just for information purposes. Due to all the child protection reform that has been going on for a period of time now, part of that was a Minnesota Department of Human Services administrative rule that came into place last year that requires counties to provide 24/7 access to social workers for child protection issues of imminent danger. We've always had a system in place whereby law enforcement had access to social workers as they felt they needed, and this has made a more formalized process. As part of that, we do now have a one phone number that is available to the Sheriff's Department and the Police Department, as they're the ones that get the initial calls regarding child protection issues after hours, and they now can just call that one number and have access to either supervisor or a child protection social worker after hours, weekends, and all holidays. This was all part of the union contract I negotiated for the workers, too, so...
Well, I was just gonna say, is there an impact in county dollars, or did we get this fund that I can't?
No, it will, it will have an impact on county dollars, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kathy. Land and forestry business, Nathan.
Good morning.
Good morning.
That's right, Karate must have heard that Nathan was gonna get hired, and he got himself in a good position. I never see, he must, where is he?
He's in Little Fork.
Little Fork. Yeah, he's a good kid.
Yeah.
How was your life?
Good. You can go ahead, Nathan.
All right, so the first item here is to award our truck bid that we sent out for bids. We only received one quote, that was from Worley Motors, for a purchase price of just a new truck of a little over $24,500. We had a truck that we were looking at trading in, they would give us a trade-in allowance of $1,862. recommendation is to transfer that trade-in vehicle, or that spare vehicle that we have, Unit 73, over to the Highway Department for the trade-in allowance that Worley's were going to allow, so.
Did the state bid vehicle even have tires on it? It looks like they took everything out.
Yeah, they.
How much is it?
Not much, it's pretty plain, plain Jane, not some of the stuff that we kind of need to have equipped on the vehicle for our uses, definitely not.
Joel Mager would have been right down to the radio. He didn't want any answers.
Motion by Commissioner Pavlik. Second by Commissioner Nordby. And I figure what I had to deal with power windows and everything else. Anything that was considered electric was on.
The heater was optional for you.
Yeah, any discussion. Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Second item, did you guys do the addition of that ARDC?
Yep, thank you. Yep, that's added to the agenda, so.
Okay, so we, Chairman Adie and Jenny received a request from ARDC for to contribute some funding to a northern St. Louis and northeast Coochin County Comprehensive Trails Plan. So the group, they're looking at contribution from us of $4,000 for that.
I just want to make sure you feel that it's noteworthy.
Well, I spoke to St. Louis County, and so in their, in ARDC's proposal, they say that the funding request is pending. I spoke to their land department folks. Maybe that funding request got routed to a different department, but their, their land department folks were not aware of.
They haven't approved it.
They haven't approved it, yeah, as far as their land department folks are concerned. And the way they look at it is, is they're fine with providing the land base for these trails, but they don't necessarily, their land department in St. Louis County, they don't really get into the weeds on actual funding requests. So I, you know, I don't know if there's another avenue for this, if it's palatable or not, so.
If I could, Mr. Chair, Kevin and I, of course, sit on that board, and they were, they were going to, they were leveraging money somehow, but to do these trail systems throughout the region, throughout all, it would go into all the counties. A lot of counties already have these well-developed trail systems. We have, we don't have much up here, so I think it's, you know, if it sounds like the board is interested in it, I think, I think, I think there's a good portion of the public that would like to see trails more trail. But we don't want to get into a situation where we're, I think, oh, that.
And the other, the other thing is, is they define the area of Cooch County that this plan would cover is the area surrounding the park. So, I mean, we have, you know, we've got the ski, there's the ski trail out there, there's the bike trail, and then there's a, there's a few grant needs, some mobile trails out that way currently. You know, going forward, you know, maybe there's, maybe the park contributes to this too, you know?
Isn't that part that they were focusing on in St. Louis County as well?
Yeah, nor, more northern, you know, but yeah, so much of the park is in that part of the county, too. But I mean, there's been a real renewed effort in northern St. Louis County, especially around ATV trail designation. So I think that, that has helped this process gain momentum. And the other thing is, is Andy Hubley makes note of in his request letter, I mean, he would, you know, it sounds like he'd be willing to come to the board to present on this further, so.
Ryan, did you have?
Yeah, just, Nathan, do you have an idea where, where the funding would come out of?
As far, I mean, we have, we have a parks account, but that's more for the maintenance on our own.
That's what I was looking at. I mean, obviously, it does not kind of fit into, into the designation of what our park fund is.
Right, right. This is more of a comprehensive, all-ownership type plan, so it would include our lands plus federal and state and possibly private lands.
It means your, it came out of your park fund, because I know you have so much money.
Yeah.
What it seems like, there's a lot of state money available and other monies out of item, this is the place for the county to be.
That's why ARDC's, that's why it's through the Development Commission, because they're able to leverage those funds. Pretty hard for an individual county to go to the state and leverage that for a trail.
Yeah, but what the state has, trail funds and dedicated money set aside, I kind of think that maybe we should have looked someplace else, personally.
Do you want to send Andy a letter and ask him to come up?
Yeah, it's up to the board, and that's what you're going to do, but that's basically what you're hearing here today, is what it is. So I think the question is, you want to just not do the trails, or you want to try like Wayne was saying, to individually get some funding, or do you want to do it as part of the comprehensive effort? And I think, I think we're better off, if we can do it for that amount of money, being part of that comprehensive effort, because that's, that's how you leverage dollars. But if, if the board wanted to do Andy, Andy would be glad to come up there. What is, what is the timeframe on this?
This, according to their letter, their request letter, is they want to, they want to begin the project early this summer, so it's kind of a little open-ended, I guess.
Hubley's a person who's done all the planning efforts in this county since I've been here. Yeah, I just, Mr. Chair, I, I think I'd request that Mr. Hubley come up and give a short presentation to the board. This is the first that, that I've really seen Andy, but I think for the rest, Commissioner, you guys probably seen a little bit, but it'd be worthwhile to hear from you.
Okay, so motion in?
Sure. Request Andy Hubley to come to board and discuss this.
Second. Got a motion by Commissioner McBride, second by Commissioner Pavlik.
If we do this, have you got that money in your budget?
I don't have a budget. I mean, I, you know, I guess, you know, I guess one thought would be, is that something maybe from KDA, you know?
Yeah, that may be a, all right, I was just curious.
I think that's what you would have to do. I think KDA's kind of on over budget, too.
Okay, that's asking Andy Hubley to, to come up and do a presentation on this project. I will take care of that. Any, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Thanks, Lynn.
See you next Wednesday.
Yeah, you have option S in Little Fork.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We've seen this guy before today.
I knew a slightly larger version, if it's of any interest.
See that one better?
Kind of, it's bigger, bigger numbers.
Bigger font, sorry.
Bigger print.
Bigger numbers.
That we saw the other day, Joe?
It's simpler.
Yeah.
Same number, bigger scale.
Right, we went on six pages rather than four.
Yeah, I see that. We put it in every year to keep it all, to hold it down.
Did I hear yesterday? About the 30 trains can we mount? Is, is that from, from somebody out there?
I even got calls about the sewer line. Let's get started. Oh, yeah.
Okay, Joe.
So we have an update on projects and project funding, project programming, some information on wetlands credits, and some discussion on our opportunities to advance encumber. So we wanted to talk about it in the context of a five-year plan that we developed outlining construction projects. This is really focusing on construction, not maintenance, but construction projects over the next five years. Some of the things, just to call to the board's attention, could influence how we approach budgeting and project prioritization over the next couple of years. The first page is really just kind of background information. At the bottom of page one, it talks about how much money we had available at the beginning of the 2016 construction season. So maybe we could turn the page to page two. The brown, the brown lines across here show sort of a header for the 2017 season here, and focusing on the casile regular construction fund, county state aid highway regular construction fund, sort of in the middle of the page there. You see in 2017, we list 3.5 million, highlighted in yellow here, as funds available for construction projects at the beginning of the 2017 season. We started listing some projects we'd like to do in 2017, a bridge on Number 8, some crack ceiling on a couple of roads, and some paving. And then we get to kind of the meat of this page. It's talking about wetlands. There's a, there's a decision to be made here, I think, and it relates to a future project, the extension of Highway 24 over to Highway 11. It's a big project, it's an expensive project, and it has a lot of wetland impacts. So one of the things we wanted to bring to the board's attention here, starting on the bottom of the second page, there's two ways we can approach wetland credits or wetland mitigation credits for a project such as Highway 24. We can either purchase the wetland credits through Bowser, or we can establish our own wetland credit bank and sort of create credits and then draw from our own bank. The county had done that previously at Donick Lake. It was a, it was a long-term project, but it was helpful in sort of providing credits for some projects. This outlines two scenarios again, option one is to purchase the credits. Trying to give you a feel for the size of that. We think there are about 16 acres of impacts for Highway 24. At a two-to-one replacement ratio, which is what Bowser would require, that's 32 acres of mitigation. 32 acres times 25,000 an acre is $800,000. And so again, if we were to purchase wetland credits for the extension of that road, $800,000 for wetland credits. We assume sort of the going rate to buy a credit or an acre from Bowser is 25,000. We see there's actually some credits coming online in the south part of Cooch County, but those are priced at $33,000 an acre. So to turn the page, the second option here is to establish our own wetland credit bank, and you'll see from the numbers that it's a less expensive option, or at least has the potential to be, but it's also a time-consuming option. In a best-case scenario, the county could have wetland credits come online in three to four years. And the reason that's important, important, of course, is because we're trying to get the Highway 24 project in as soon as we can. So Bowser and the Corps both have processes to review and approve the establishment of wetland credits, and they would say it's a three-to-five-year process. Some folks that have gone through that would say it takes longer than three to five years. So we are skeptical that we can have credits available if we started in 2017 developing our own bank, which would mean we purchased the property, we'd get it approved, we developed the plan, we make the physical changes, we bring it online. It's a performance-based credit system. The Corps and Bowser have to come out there every year and approve and say, it looks like you've established, you know, 10 credits, and we'll give you a credit for 10 or 20 or whatever the number is. And so that, that process, we think, is at risk. So we're saying here that we think the better option is to buy the credits, but that's part of what we want to discuss with the board here. So on this page here, this third page that I'm on, the information in the blue texture on the left talks about outlining a process if you were to develop your own credits. And we say three to five years, it could easily be five to eight years. You would see that this can be developed at a lesser price. We could estimate that you might end up with $5,000 for credit in the scenario where you develop them yourself, but the timetable is the risk there. You might not have the credits you want for eight years, which would mean in that scenario, you couldn't extend Highway 24 for eight years, let's say. So we just want to move on. I don't want to belabor the point, but there is a fork in the road, sort of on, on looking ahead at the 24 extension and having the approaches to buying credits versus developing our own. So.
Is there anything going on in St. Paul right now that would help the situation that we know of?
My understanding of what's happening is, is to provide additional funding for Bowser to go establish more wetland credit banks. It does remind me of a good point, though. If it, if it was a traditional county state aid highway project, we should be able to get credits from Bowser. Bowser has a road bank. Bowser's job is to develop a road bank the counties can draw from. The problem with the 24 project, or the challenge, is new alignments are not eligible for road bank credits. We felt this on the 107 job. When we realigned the east half of the road, they denied us Bowser road bank credits. So if it was a traditional project, just reconstructing and it had those impacts, you'd get different access to Bowser credits.
Part two of my question, have you really established a road?
No, we have not. We have established what we think are some optimum routes. We still have analysis to go through with the Corps to analyze sequencing and so on. And there'll be additional public meetings, too, to talk about as those develop. The reason, we just wanted to look ahead and understand how are we going to deal with the wetland credits on that project.
Joe, just about any, any route we were going to take, there's significant impacts.
They are, they are significant. Yes, they all are big numbers.
Yep, yep. We were looking at this long before Joe got here, but back around the same issue with wetlands, but because it was a reroute, yeah, we weren't eligible to get the savings. But this is another example where Coochin County is penalized because of our vast wetlands. There's not a project we can do without a wetland impact where the counties don't view it.
Right, and you can.
That's right.
Coochin River, where the 18 acres are going to affect the water issue in Coochin County. I mean, they have to be $80,000 to play back our swamp. I mean, if it's worth that much, how come we're only getting a buck and a half an acre on it for Hilton?
But for the goodness of God.
That makes sense.
The other project we've got going, I don't know if that ever has come to fruition, is that one, of course, not like County Road 8, I think it is? Or 65?
Yeah, I can, it's kind of timely discussion, so just the thing that was hanging that project up is access easement from, from a private landlord just yesterday. I was contacted by that private landlord, and they are willing to give us an easement to carry that for a fee, so we'll likely proceed with that.
And how many, how many acres can we expect there?
Well, it's, the trouble is, is so they want two-to-one replacement, but this is an 80-acre parcel, it's a waste of your preservation site, so they're only, they're going to, they'll only give us, they'll only give us 10 credits if we set aside that whole 80 acres, so it's on one side of the coin. They want two-to-one replacement, but they'll only give us eight-to-one credits on the bank, so.
But I mean, there, it's something.
That's right. If that system comes online, we can draw from that, and then we can reduce what we have to buy, right, for the 24 extension. You could have up to eight or?
There would be potentially up to 10 credits.
And then Brian and Kevin can attest to this, looking at developing our own. I think it'd be, eight years would be much closer. It just takes a long time. And it's not just here, everywhere I've seen that, it's a long process. Something to keep in mind.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Skoye.
You mentioned the wetland credit banking in Southern Park. How many of these properties are?
And Mr. Hasbarger has a coming down, coming online, east to north home.
But that, I think, I don't think there was that many acres, or was it?
No, not that many. I think he's, he took a 40-acre parcel, and I'm not sure how many credits he gets out of it, but we did talk about when he's going to come online. He thought soon and what the price would be, just to be able to compare that to the price that we've heard the Bowser folks are, are hearing. So it was, that was the 33,000 versus the 25 we've heard elsewhere. But that, that site alone, I don't think would have enough credits for us for the 24 job.
That picture Frankie on the wall is close to your place at the airport, and that was a wetland way back in the, in the 90s. We had to pay $20,000 to mitigate that back then, so the price has gone up 33, you're right in that.
Yeah, it's too bad. It's a, it's a hard item. So just to keep you through it, at the bottom of page three, we see the totals. We show for 2017, spending about three and a half, we have $70,000. The red numbers are credits, positive numbers. So we have $70,000 left to begin the 2018. So if we flip the page, page four, it shows at the top, standard casile allocation, 2.8 million, we had 70,000 left over from the previous year. We show 2.8 million available. We say that, we get into the purple texture, this is where we get into this advance encumber discussion. We say that 2.8 million is not enough to get us through the Highway 103 or the South Jackfish project, and so this is where advance encumber would, would come into play. The rules are, on advance encumbering, you can reach ahead into next year's county state aid highway construction allocation. So in this scenario, we say we reach ahead into $2,019, we grab 1.1 of the 2.8 million dollars. We use part of those advance encumber funds to prosecute the work in 2018, which in this scenario would include the 103 South Jackfish, two miles of project. We think it's kind of the three to three and a half million dollar price range, plus we have a couple other projects in here. So we see, again, focusing on. So we see, again, focusing on the yellow numbers, it says in 2018, we spent 3.9 million. We had 3.97 with our advance encumbering. We have $70,000 left at the end of 2018. We go on to 2019. We say that we remind ourselves that we don't have a 2.8 million allocation because we reduced it by 1.1. So we have a 1.7 million to start out with, plus the 70,000 from last year. So basically, 1.77 million. We say in 2019, we almost kind of use that as a bit of a catch-up year, so we are not advance encumbering any, every year. So again, that is certainly up to the board approval, but this shows some smaller projects related to the 1.7 million. So we flip the page. We get to 2020. 2020, we have a full allocation, again, 2.8 million. We say again, we want to advance encumber 1.9 million in this scenario for year 2020. So we reach ahead into 2021 dollars. So now we have 4.7 million available for projects in 2020. We say we are tackling the Highway 24 extension in two phases because of the overall cost of the project. So we say, let's roughly do the south half of the Vanlet extension. That's about three and a half million. And now we plug in the $800,000 to purchase the wetland credits, and that number can go down if we have some from Netlink or if we do this incrementally. But generally speaking, it's a reminder on the cost of the credits. So this scenario says we have 4.7. At the beginning of the year, we spend 4.7. We about wash it out at the end of 2020. Then we get into 2021, where we'd like to proceed with the second part of the Highway 24 extension. Again, we show the need to advance encumber. We start the year with 900,000, which is the balance of the allocation left over after we advance encumbered the previous year. So we have 900,000. We say if we advance encumber again, we grab 2.6 million from year 2022. So now we have 3.5 million available for the two and a half plus a million dollar part of the second half of the Highway 24 project. We turn the page. We see at the top of this last page, we spent 3.4 million in year 2021. We have about $100,000 left in that scenario. Year 2022, because we advanced encumbered almost all of our allocation, we only have 200,000 to start with. So we use, in this scenario, year 2022 is just kind of a catch-up year. 2023, we look ahead. We have the full allocation, 2.8 million. We say again, we think we need to advance encumber 2024 dollars, again, just in this scenario. We grab 2.3 million from 2024. We add it to the 2.8 million allocation. We have 5.1 available. And again, we're targeting 5.1. If we, for example, wanted to do the Highway 24 bridge over the CN tracks, that's about a four and a half million dollar job. So that pretty much takes the combination of the allocation plus the advance encumbering. And we spend that down in 2023. If we were to turn the page, 2024, we'd have a half a million of our, sorry, it's not here, but we'd have half a million of our allocation because we had advanced encumbered. So then I think 2024 would be a makeup year again. So I know some of these things can change depending on how priorities change for the projects, but the key things I just wanted to talk about are the notion of advance encumbering, if the board is okay with that. What's in the background here is the fact that we are a minimum county. And the minimum counties can receive scrutiny from other counties that are contributors to minimum counties. And so all of our state aid reps strongly encourage us to spend down our construction balance every year to take some of the scrutiny off of the fact that you're a minimum county. If you don't spend down your construction balance, additional scrutiny can come your way as to why are the other counties chipping in to help you as a minimum county? Of course, the other option was that we could sort of spread out our money. If we didn't spend down each year, we could leave some money in the bank, let's say, to help fund the bigger projects that are coming. You know, if we had 2.8 million this year, and you know you want to do 103 next year, you could spend half your allocation this year, knowing that you need half of it next year to get after the 103 job. Then you're taking on more of a strategy where you're not spending down your balance every year. You're trying to set some aside for next year so you don't have to advance encumber. But that gets into those offsetting issues relative to minimum county. So some of these philosophical items, spend down because you're a minimum county. Even though you know next year your allocation won't be enough, you'll have to advance encumber, and so on. So those are the things I just kind of wanted to touch on, see if the board is okay with the concept of advance encumbering. And if the board felt like purchasing wetland credits despite the cost would be the preferred way to go as a way to get the 24 extension program.
Sure.
By the time you get to 2024, it'll just be you and Jenny. We'll be in the nursing room by then. We can improve anything.
No, I think, I mean, you've done a lot of work on this. I'm just saying, I think it's a good plan.
The wetlands are always going to be the drag on these projects, is how I see it. Are you looking for a formal approval on this?
Didn't need one. I just wanted to sort of talk about the minimum county, the advance encumbering, and the wetland side of things.
Minimum county is critical because, I mean, that's always a target. So what he's laid out here, we're looking good.
There's some risk in not using that money. Other counties are looking for this.
Right. For the past 20 years, I wonder, since I've been here, it's always been an issue.
There is no financial penalty on the advance encumbering. There's no interest. It's a zero-interest reach ahead. It obviously affects your allocations as you roll forward, but there is no financial penalty for doing it.
And if we run short on money, we can get something from Devon and there.
Yes.
But one more, you know, before you leave, Joe, just pulling back to our previous issue there, we're going to have Andy Hubley come up on these trails plans. Paul's a commissioner and another life with Kevin and I on ARDC. So I think the two of you, if you could make it, it would be important for you to be there to see what he's, give us some answer from your perspectives. But other than that, again, I think it's a good plan.
There's no reasonable way to move on that mineral project. I mean, it just can't happen.
There are environmental challenges with the documentation in that process. Yeah, I think that if we had the funds and everything else would line up, I suppose 2019 might be the first year it could be eligible. But the environmental process is kind of a year and a year and a half, so I don't know if you could make 2019 worth it.
And we've got rate-of-way issues. I mean, that's going to take a lot of work to do between now and.
It's a handful. That one is, yeah. We know it's important, and we are working on it currently. And that's part of what we wanted to have that look ahead on the wetland side of things. If creating our own credits was the board's preference, then we know we have some work to do there as well.
Seeing what the price of the credits and everything is, I mean, you know I'm for the road project, of course.
Right.
But I'd like to bring this to our next AMC meeting. I just had one last week, but I'd like to bring it to them and let the rest of the districts and that know exactly. I mean, they know we deal with wetland issues. They just, I don't know if they totally understand how severe it is, you know, how severe it is and how costly it is to us. So other counties don't deal with, most of the other counties don't deal with, you know, wetland issues like we do. So, Commissioner McBride.
You know, one of the issues, and we discussed it before, and you know Frankie's a farmer and you talk about buying farmland. Sometimes farmland looks a lot more attractive to, you know, to continue farming. You put it in a wetland, but what happens is the person puts it in a wetland bank, then eventually they sell all the credits off, then they walk away from it, and it goes tax forfeit in four years. And you've effectively removed this from the tax rolls. So it gets to be a vicious circle. I mean, you need the credits, but you also need the tax revenue off that property. And that's what you lose. And counties like Aiken have lost thousands and thousands of dollars because of these things that went forfeit.
It's an interesting point, too. We think you can use your state aid money to buy wetland credits. You cannot use state aid money to develop wetland credits. Those are out-of-pocket local levy dollars. So one of the things the Corps would say is they'll give you 20% when they first approve your wetland bank. They'll give you 15 to 20%. So in that scenario, we thought you'd have to aim for sort of a hundred, sort of that 100-acre type number. So maybe you're buying 160 acres for a couple hundred thousand dollars, let's say, so that you end up with 100 credits, so that in three or four years, you get 20%. That's 20 credits. The next year, maybe you get another 10%. So now you're at 30 credits, let's say. So there is incentive to try to develop a large wetland credit area because you would only bring them online incrementally. If you were going to develop a 40-acre parcel and get 20% of that, you know, you only get eight acres in the first year. So you'd have the out-of-pocket $300,000 to $400,000 maybe, which would have to be local levy dollars to develop your credits, just as another sort of disadvantage of developing credits.
Commissioner.
It affects everything, including economic development, and it's, you know, right at the point. It's reverse engineering. What are we limited on in this county? High land. You're taking that as economic land. But to that point, I'm glad Nathan is here. You know, we're not, my understanding is we're not stuck to Cooch Jake County here. We could be lucky in Lake of the Woods or adjoining counties to purchase wetland credits. And maybe that, maybe we, just looking at, you know, we can't pay 33,000 acres. I mean, that's crazy. But there are other banks, and I know they, so.
And we made a formal request to Bowser. We made the appeal to Bowser that we thought they could let us tap into their road bank credits if it's a safety-related project. So we provided all the documentation of why we think this is a safety-related project.
Certainly, we can make a strong argument on that.
And they have, they've turned us down. So the second step was they would look and see if in our bank service area, as they would call us, are there 30 credits available? If not, then we have to look outside of the bank service area. Bowser historically has penalized agencies if you have to buy credits outside of your bank service area. So the price could theoretically increase if you have to go outside of your bank service area.
We lost Brian Abstead on Bowser, so we don't have the in that we usually have. I guess my question would be, can we appeal Bowser's decision? Because, I mean, I can't believe we can't make that argument on safety.
I agree. It's an excellent point. I think the safety part of this 24 extension, it's a very compelling part of the story.
Bring them up here one day and set them on the east side of the railroad tracks. They might understand.
Well, could you check into that, Joe?
Yes, absolutely.
If there's an opportunity to appeal and then maybe get the two of you to testify.
Commissioner Schreiber. And now, Joe, this two-to-one ratio, why are we stuck at a two-to-one ratio when we have all this wetland? I thought that was supposed to be in the counties that didn't have the wetlands areas.
That's the guidance we have from Bowser, that it's a two-to-one replacement ratio.
I mean, if that's the case, if we build a couple more roads, we'll have 101%.
That's why the county passed the High Land Protection Act.
Well, and the other bad thing about this is, I mean, while you were at the meeting the other day, and the rapids were, Fort Lake of the Woods County's sitting there saying, you know, the mines are coming over here, buying up the only high land we've got. So, I mean, is it really fair for us to go and take away more high land that Fort Lake of the Woods County's got? I mean, they're in the same shoes we're in.
Yeah. Well, once it's out on the market, someone's going to buy it. That's my point. That's already.
What I mean, they're doing everything they can do to reduce the amount of banking in their counties, too.
Yeah. Yeah, I told them what we did. Well, we did. I don't know that we'd ever survive a championship.
Commissioner, we did make any inroads of the legislature on that 93% to be excluded from.
From being utilized for wetlands. I don't know if we ever got a final, we made the appeal, but I don't know if we ever got a final decision on that. I guess something, again, will need to keep Representative Beckland and Senator Black to speed on, too, because it's really hurting.
All right.
Thanks, Joe.
Thanks, Joe. You seen it enough, haven't you?
Good morning. Commissioners, good morning.
Were you here for that trail discussion at ARDC? We talked about it there, doing that regional trail thing, so we're going to have them come up and talk about it and see if we're going to contribute our $4,000. It'd be good for you.
Absolutely. Well, good morning. As you recall, I sat in before you in January looking for early support for the construction of a third coal box at the airport test facility. And it really came as a result of a request from our current, less our Jaguar Land Rover, who this year is completing their five-year lease with us. And as part of the extension discussion, they looked at resources available, and they said, you know, our activity is such that we really could, we're at capacity, we really could use it as a coal box. So we started to discuss what we did in the past. I went before you at that time and approached D and as well as the City of International Falls to use the same model as we did the last time. Essentially, a three-way with D in for one-third, the city in for one-third, and the county. The difference between the local match or the local participation is it would be in the form of a loan, 2% money, five-year term. They have paid that off, and again, they've been a very good partner. So I submitted after some back and forth to make sure, we had to get approval from JLR management that they were going to support this, as well as tightening up our estimates on the cost. The last box was approximately 600,000. We brought the cost down about 555,000. And submitted a preliminary deed application where two things occurred. They supported this project, but they also, I submitted it as the applicant, but because of the rules, they needed the city or county as owners of the facility, joint owners, to submit as applicant. So they sent some materials back, including the resolution and the actual applicant cover sheet. The county acted as applicant last time, but again, it's a joint ownership with the city and the county. The city has, the last city council meeting passed a resolution, a reformatted resolution, basically stipulating the conditions of this project, the participation from both the city and the county. It gets a little into the weeds with the wording of this, which is a little frustrating, but that's, we were encouraged to go back, and so that's why we're back here today, is to get a reformatted resolution recorded and resubmit our application to D.
Commissioner. So the county needs to act as a fiscal agent. Is that what you're saying?
No, the county just needs to be applicant because they will ultimately be the owner. The city and county will jointly own, as they do with the other facilities, test facilities at the airport.
Commissioner Beckland.
I'm on board of Jenny, as they, Jenny had to review this. I know we, it was for the city, too. They had to.
Correct.
Yeah. So to get this application correct, so that, you know, the liabilities and that's after the year.
Right. And there were some language changes that the city actually made that I had wanted to make, too. And so basically, it's the same resolution that the city is. There are going to be more parts. I did talk to Paul about being fiscal agent. They will be able to fund the construction of the project because of, so the county will not be the fiscal agent, as they will pay all of the construction costs from KETA, assuming that you get the two loans, and then the deed payment is, you get reimbursement on that. So there might be a little bit of delay on the reimbursement from that, but you should have enough funds to get started and then manage that cash flow.
Correct. That's how we did the previous coal box. And yeah, that is a grant from D and then again, loan from the city.
The city's approved it.
Correct. And the other thing, too, the third part about it is KETA will be also responsible for all of the reporting requirements through D.
Move.
Support.
Got a motion by Commissioner Beckland, second by Commissioner McBride. Who's the attorney for KETA?
And he's looked at it.
Okay. Commissioner McBride.
Isn't my understanding, Paul, that both the city and the county had to approve this resolution before it was forward to a deed, and then they would move forward with a grant?
Correct.
And obviously, there's no guarantee.
There's no guarantee, but all indications are they're supporting of this. I think it really helped when all the commissioners from the state were up on a tour last summer and went up to the airport and looked at the facility and really, I think, went a long way in saying, "No, this is pretty interesting. We can support this."
Just for everybody, Jaguars still here.
Still here.
Still here, putting money into the community, so.
And they hired two locals full-time, and they are currently in the UK with JLR. And they hired two locals, full-time, and they are currently in the UK with JLR. So our relationship with them just continues to get stronger, and they're hiring more folks, so it's been, it's been good.
On top of that, I mean, when you go out to Southern Roach's place, I mean, it's full of cars all winter, too, so it's been, it's been good.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Do I have a second?
All in favor? Close? Motion carries. Thanks, Paul.
It's not Southern Roach's place, I remember. I see too much of Joe today, I mean.
Any further business for the board?
Just Pam just dropped us off, when she said there were three, Ecam, Ecam units, that's for the AIS, there's five, Skidmore Park, Romanlin, Tilson, Dove Island, and Rainier.
Not units, there's only going to be one unit. But five locations where they're going to be stationed, the people.
Frontier is probably, at least in the spring, the busiest.
I'm guessing that's what it is, because each of those contamination units is pretty spending. Move to adjourn. Got a motion by Commissioner Pavlik. Second by Commissioner Nordby to adjourn. All in favor? Close? Motion carries.